Clark?
Here.
Fish? Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parsons?
President.
Mayor Lumber.
Mike's, Barb's here. Uh, we've gotten quotes back from Wellmark, Avera, Sanford, and then some ancillary proposals. We got a very nice email back from United saying they really don't want to waste anybody's time, that they can't beam what we've got. And then I'd also reached out to the pool, the health insurance pool for the state. I have not heard back from them. I emailed her again a couple times, haven't heard back, so... Anyway, you're on.
It's not... I got it. I know the drill. Okay, so I don't know what you got. I think you have the, uh, you got the spreadsheets in front of you. I see, okay. And I don't know if you got in that packet or not, or in that information, if it was given to you, but we had, you know, this year's was, uh, on the grandfather plan was a 17% increase. I don't know if that was in your, in your information, okay? So that was the, that was the increase on the, on the, on the plan, our current plan. So the plans that you see in front of you on the spreadsheet are going to be the grandfather plan as they will be, that premium will be Jan-, uh, July 1st, okay? So I didn't, I took that 17% increase in there. We've, that's what that is. And then we put in, we've got the, uh, the non-grandfathered plan, um, what they call their, their mid-size or large group. That's the next line. We did an alternate. I know, I think Chuck maybe mentioned that he wanted a 4,000, to see a 4,000, that's what that is. And then also an HSA. Um, and then what I tried to do is duplicate that on the additional carriers, on the, on the Sanford, on the Avera, same thing, the 2,000 to, to go apples to apples with what we have currently, also a 4,000 option and then an HSA. Now, these aren't the only options we can come up with. This is just something, I wanted to keep it simple and do what I was told, uh, and so this is what we presented. And also that's on Sanford as well, the 2,000, the 4,000, and HSA. Like, like Brian's stated, uh, United Healthcare did not, uh, want to quote the business. They didn't feel like they would be competitive after reviewing the information. Um, so they did not, we, that quote is not included. We do not have one.
We just had a tough, tough year this year?
Pardon me?
We just had a tough, tough year with, uh, claims this year?
You know, claims, uh, again, that was in that information. Uh, claims were just about like normal, Paul, for a year. It was, uh, 700 and, I've got the number here, 737,000. So it was, that was, that's where we're at. We're usually 600 to 800,000, like clockwork. Um, I, the, the biggest, you know, they had, risk was, um, our biggest driver in the renewal. Uh, we had a 6% base rate for the state of South Dakota, size 2 to 50 in employer size. That was the base rate, was 6%. We got a nine, nine and a quarter on, um, on risk level. So stating, yeah, our claims have had, we, we probably have some claims in there that are going to be ongoing, and some larger claims, and so that's what really drove that, was that, was our risk level. Uh, but not, again, I, I didn't look to me like our claims, total claims dollars were out of the ordinary.
Interesting. Uh, when you say base, that's trend?
Correct.
Okay.
So if they take basically every employer side, you know, employee, you're in the side of the state of South Dakota, size 2 to 50, that's a base rate, so that's where they're going to start, basically, their renew-, you know, that's going to be the percentage increase on those size of groups, 6%. You know, overall, if you still look at our, you know, we did a, this is just a, just through some numbers, if you look at our percentage increases since 2004, we're still averaging about 7.3% annual increase on our health insurance. Um, over the last two years, it's, it comes out to about, you know, we had a decrease last year, but over the last two years, we're looking still at, you know, 10% over the last two years. Um, a lot of people have signed up for that, but, but 17 is a big number.
Last year was a decrease, right?
It was, uh, yeah, 7.37% decrease last year. And I think if you even average out over the last five years, we're around 5%.
Somehow, my history tells me that you always pay for those decreases next year.
Yeah, well, I don't know. You, if you, you know, look back, 2012, we had a, almost a 5% decrease, and in 2013, we got 1.65, so, you know?
That's a good number.
You're probably right, Paul. Over the history, you're probably right, but there are the exceptions to the rule, for sure.
Right. Well, entertain any questions, comments from the council members right now?
Casey, just to refresh our memory, if we leave the grandfathered plan?
Yep.
We could offer employees options from the other plans, right? We could offer, so take the Avera plans, for example. We could let them choose between Plan A or Plan B. Is that correct?
If, if we, if we get rid of the grandfathered plan, is that what you were stating? Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, Sanford really does, um, two plans. They like to offer two as their options. They don't like, they will do three, but they prefer to do two. Um, Avera, well, same thing. They'll, they'll let you go up to three if you want to. Um, and the same with Blue Cross, for that matter. I mean, we could do that if we, if you choose to, to get out of the grandfathered status, you could offer multiple plans in the Wellmark family as well.
Well, I think we have a couple of issues here. Our, one of our issues was if we were going to rejigger who was making the contributions for the premiums. The second issue is there's quite a spread between the grandfathered plan and the Sanford and Avera plans, understanding that people don't like to switch, but, um, we're talking $10,000 a month. So I, I think we have two things to talk about. Maybe there's some sort of a compromiser, maybe else.
You know, if I can, I'll just add this. I, I didn't include this in the quote because it really, but here's just an example. This would be, this would be a Blue Cross, non-grandfathered plan, okay? $4,000 deductible, 8,000 family, so we, we would double, of course, where we're at currently. Um, 6350 in out-of-pocket max on a single, and 12.7 on a family. So we, we jumped those, those out-of-pockets quite substantially, but our premium, we can get down, we can, it's, it's about $46,000. So I'm just throwing that out there as an option. It didn't get included on there. I know we increased those things, um, but I just wanted to get that. There is another option.
Yeah, I, I'm not so concerned about the deductible. I need to get the employees with a higher deductible. I'm still concerned about the perception that when we get to that four years, that it's all paid for. I'd like, I would be happy with 5%. I'm not asking for much, but I, I think we have to have some skin in the game. There's going to be a hue and a cry if we change and go to Avera or Sanford. Somebody's not going to be happy, and I understand that. But I, in good conscience, also cannot say that $10,000 spread a month is appropriate either. So I guess I need to hear from somebody else.
For me, when I look at the numbers, and I agree, I'd rather see like the Avera 3,000, 6,000 deductible rather than going 4 to 8. I mean, we're talking 211,492 difference between our current plan and the Avera plan. I mean, $200,000. I guess for me, when you talk about compromise, if you look at a plan like that, and factor in the deductible buyback, that last my ask, we had about 17 people that normally participate in that, so that's another 25,000 we're exposed for. Well, the true exposure would be 36 people, so another 54,000. I mean, I'd rather see us help fund an HSA, you know, with a couple thousand dollars. If you talk about skin in the game, there's more skin in the game. Um, there's also some risk and reward, no different than how people choose their car insurance deductibles. If they, they don't have an accident, they're money ahead, um, so same, same goes here. Uh, I mean, $100,000 is a lot of money. Even if we funded a couple thousand dollars in an HSA, which has so many perks for the employee, if they're fully educated on it and understand it, and hopefully can carry towards it, um, it can do wonders for them on other levels besides just this health insurance plan. It can become their long-term care funding plan. It can be something that supplements the retirement, um, this tax-free money that they get to use to spend on their medical purchases, or prescription drugs, or their vision, or their dental, or, the list is huge, what qualifies for that. We can still come out so far ahead on a plan like that, and still be a really solid plan.
I guess I'm not in favor of the HSA, HSA that much. It's really great for, for young people, but in my experience, I've found that people don't put that money away, uh, like they had intended to, and then there's a shortage, and I guess I'm a pessimist in that respect. Been doing this for 30 years. Uh, I would not go personally, I would not push all the way over to the HSA.
Well, that's why I was asked, would you do options? So you could like offer the employee, if they didn't want to do the HSA, then they would have more skin in the going with the deductible.
Well, I mean, I think there are some people that would do it.
And if we fund it, I, I totally understand your, your side of the HSA, where I used to sell single, individual health, and it is a harder thing to get individuals to do. I think we have a better shot on a group plan, especially if we are funding that much of it and educating them. I think a lot of it comes down to that education piece from our agents and, and motivating them, what that big picture is, if they fund that a ton of money than what we do. But we just give the employees another option that they don't have now. Is, is council pretty familiar with how HSAs work?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
And I would tend to agree with you both. I mean, when I started this, when I started this discussion, I was curious to see what money could be saved, you know, on an annual basis, and it looks pretty substantial. Now, having said that, and we had Brett's letter, I don't want to negatively impact the reason that people work here either, but I don't think we can ignore the savings that we think we can find in that annual premium. So hopefully we could, some sort of compromise, do both. Help fund things for the employees, so that we don't drive people away, because I understand the job market, it's tough to replace people.
Well, you know, one, like compromise, and I, then I'm talking, I have it all set in my mouth, is, well, one compromise is if we would choose Avera or Sanford, because that's, that's a painful process for people. I understand that. But then we continue to pay the premiums. And we don't ask them to, to pay any of the premiums. That would be a trade-off, at least in my mind, at this point. We can't, I don't think we can, I don't think we can make huge changes. It's just too much, it's just too much of a challenge for me. So maybe we just take one thing at a time.
What are we paying right now? What's occurring for, for, for health insurance for the grandfathered plan for this year?
67,111 plus 218. But it's, but that would go into 66,000. Yeah, that would be the rule, so 27,000.
And I assume that if we switch plans, the, the deductible buyback goes away? Or is that a separate?
No, that's, that's something that's, that's totally on your, you know, you guys are doing that on your own, and that's something that, uh, you know, you could choose to continue or, you know, that has nothing to do with really, uh, the insurance company or the carrier, or me, or myself, for that matter.
Yeah, we're not talking about that at this point.
Okay.
I mean, that is an option to get rid of it.
Get rid of it, or keep it, or, you know, so?
We keep it, that's 50,000 on to the premium. So that much? If every employee were to use it, it would be down, it's unlikely, but...
I, I just want to, I'll, I'll add on the HSA, as long as around, you know, just, this year for 2019, you can contribute $3,500 on a single, or 7,000 on a family. Uh, there are some catch-up provisions if you're, depending on your age, of 55 or older, then you can, you can play a, you can do a catch-up of that of an additional $1,000. Um, so those, you know, those, that's the max that you can fund those accounts in a given year. Now, they will, um, I think Dana may have talked about, they will occur, they will, you know, go over from year to year. You don't have to use it. You don't lose it. So they do, they do build up over time, um, which I think is a good thing for those. Um, also, I, I guess I'd point out too, that there is, you know, your out-of-pockets do change on that, on the, on the HSA, so just something to be aware of and to look at. Um, but again, any changes we really make, that's probably going to be the case on, on some of these as far as out-of-pockets.
So let's just look at, as a, as a comparison, the Wellmark, Wellmark grandfathered plan, that's 2,000, 4,000, the Avera 2,000, and the Sanford 2,000. So the bottom line is pre-substantial. Now, Casey, do you think that they're buying our business? I mean, that's always the question. Are they lowballing it? They are both lowballing it, if that's the case.
Yeah, I, initially, I would have said, and maybe a couple of years ago, I would have said yes. I've done some substantial homework on this, um, recently with both of these carriers. And I hesitate to say this because I, I don't, but they've told me what their, what their annual increases have been historically. Avera's saying that their, that block of businesses at a 98% retention rate. Um, so that would indicate to me that those renewals are, are, are very good, um, and that their average was somewhere around 6%. And that's the part that I really hesitate to say, uh, because that'll, that can come back to bite you, you know, when you say those things. Um, and I, and I, and I think the same is true. One of the things, and this is one of the things I learned about on the, on the UHC product of United Healthcare, I contacted both of them, I said, hey, here's the deal. Why are you guys so aggressive on these rates? And United Healthcare won't even quote it. One of the things that they, you know, indicated was that their, their, uh, provider, um, discounts are much greater amongst themselves in their own systems than they are what they give United Healthcare, or even, uh, Blue Cross, for that matter. So that was, um, you know, that made me feel a little better on that, because I had the same questions myself when you, when you see the discrepancy in those, of those rates. So I'll say that with a little bit of hesitation, but I feel better after talking to both of those carriers, um, ongoing forward, uh, as far as are they buying the business or not.
Because between the Wellmark and the Avera, that's 125,000. So Chuck, didn't you have to go through the, the, um, conversion where you could go to either provider and you were, you could go to either provider, but you had to pay a little bit more out-of-pocket if you wanted to go out of network? It's not like you can't go to your provider.
I did. We, we went through that maybe five or six years ago, and, yeah, it was not pleasant, but now, having said that, it all turned out fine.
And?
I found the family doctor, so Leanne, Leanne found a specialist, which she needed to see, you know? And now, even though we're, due to my age, we're back dealing with Medicare and then the supplemental insurance, we find ourselves still not switching, even though we could go anywhere we want.
You could go.
We're staying put. So it was more of a matter of, I didn't like to be told where I could go, but I got over it and, you know, understood that my premiums were going to be reasonable, and it all turned out all right.
But you still could go where you wanted to go.
I could.
You just had to fight the bullet and pail of it.
And I mean, with our two systems, Avera and Sanford, I felt like either one, we could get taken care of very well. So I mean, that's where I think we're lucky to live where we do. We've got two excellent systems that we can fly.
I mean, if I want to go out for supper, I can go to McDonald's, or I can go to Tailgater's, and I'm making the choice as to what I'm willing to pay. Similar kind of concept. Painful, but...
I wouldn't say it was painful. It was more of a matter for me personally. It's just, like I said, I didn't like to be told what to do when all those years prior to that, you had a choice. Now you don't, but it all looked fun. So I, I don't, looking back now, I don't have any regrets with it.
I asked Casey if there was any way to make it any easier, if you might.
And would I tell you?
He says no.
No, there's not a magic pill for that one, so.
Again, I would go back, Barb, to say we're fortunate to live where we do. We've got two good systems.
Exactly. So we have a lot of different things to try to decide.
Well, for me, it's, it's tough to ignore those potential savings in the annual premiums. That's just, that's a toughie to ignore.
What if we, what if we just, um, like I said, took it slowly? What if we just, just, what if we changed the plan, chose one of those, and, and let it be that at this time, and don't muck around with the deductibles, the buyback, let people adjust for a while? I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, get everybody. This will be hard enough if they're going to do that.
I still like the idea of operating the employee a choice, and maybe you wait it based off of how the plans are, are coming back price-wise. I mean, if you look at the Avera $2,000 deductible versus the HSA, and there's a $100,000 difference if you choose it out by, by plan, you know, so maybe if we are trying to take a baby step, we offer those two plans, and we do a deductible buyback similar to what we have now on, or maybe slightly less to make a type of change on the standard plan that's very similar to what we have, and then we offer a higher incentive on the HSA that offers the city a larger savings opportunity.
Well, we could. I don't want to make it too complicated.
Is there any downside, Casey, to offering options like that?
I don't, I, I don't, personally, I don't think there is. We do it in, we do it in our, in groups, um, but...
I guess my only, my only thought on that is, is your, and I think she kind of touched on it, you got to find an incentive, but is, is there, I don't think people are going to take the HSA per se unless they're kind of driven that way. Meaning, are you guys saying, hey, we're going to do this plan, and now you guys got to contribute 30% or something like that, or whatever the number is? I think if you keep it like it is, like what you're saying, Barb, I just don't, I don't know, unless there's an incentive. I don't know what that would be at this point, but what are you, how are you going to drive them to that HSA? I don't think I would personally go to the, go to the HSA if I was being, if I had 100% coverage and 100% of my premiums being paid for the 2,000, when I have those first dollar benefits in there of the co-pays. Um, I definitely see the advantage of the HSA for sure, for, 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 uh, saving that money and, and having that down the road for, no doubt. Um...
I could see that for like someone like Tammy, you know, that's young and, you know?
I was telling the officer, I used to, um, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to opt for that option. But I agree with you, Casey. I don't think we're going to drive too many people to that.
We got to be careful on, on, uh, go ahead. I'm going to think about this.
Can I ask for the HSA, please?
Casey, you want to explain it? It, yeah, it stands for Health Savings Account. So you basically, um, can, you'll have your plan, and then inside that plan, you can set up a separate account. Um, and, and those funds are, are used tax-free dollars. They come out tax-deferred. Um, they can grow, you can put them in investments if you want to, um, and they carry over year after year. And then you can take those dollars out, uh, to use for medical, if you choose. Um, it's kind of like your, it's similar to a flexible spending account, very similar to that, so...
So Casey, the difference between the Sanford 2,000 and the 4,000, is that what they, no, no, is that what they refer to as high deductible?
Well, maybe there's, yeah.
That's the tricky one. The high deductible is anything over 1,300, I believe, is the, is the number they call a high deductible. But you also can't have, um, certain benefits in there, like co-pays, like prescription coverage and that. So it's a little misleading on that, Chuck, uh, when they say what a high deductible plan is and that qualifies for an HSA, because not all deductibles that are high qualify for an HSA. Does that make sense?
If you do the HSA part out of it, is the Sanford 4,000 what they're referred to as a high deductible?
No, no.
So what's the high deductible?
So, again, the high deductible would be anything, I think, I believe it's, uh, over 1,300 and up. And then again, they don't have, they don't have those extra benefits in there, like, like office co-pays, uh, prescription co-pays.
You're paying that.
Correct. You're paying, you're paying, yep, you're paying the full.
Okay.
Yep.
So have you seen employers help fund that for two years for employees if they switched to that?
The HSA account, or the?
The high deductible.
No.
Casey, on those HSAs, then, they're, I guess explain the co-pays, because it doesn't show a dollar amount for the co-pays on the office visit ER, RX. So if you have an HSA...
Yeah, so if you have an, yeah.
Pay whatever they're charging.
Exactly. So in an HSA, um, you're paying all your first dollar benefits, or first dollar costs, I should say. So if you go in for an office visit, let's just say, I think, I think an office visit charges $220 roughly. Um, you would pay the 220. There may be a discount built in there between the provider and that facility. Um, so you would, you know, maybe it's going to be whatever that discount, whatever they have negotiated, maybe it's 150 bucks versus 220.
Right there, folks, you are completely taking out that whole room out there.
Yep. Another thing, Casey, if you could explain a little bit on the Avera plans and really Sanford plans, but the Avera plans, you have your individual deductible out of network, whereas in the, our current Wellmark plan, we don't have a out-of-network deductible.
Yep.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Yep, great question. So on the, on the Sanford and Avera, they're going to, you're going to have a separate, it's two buckets. You've got a, you've got a bucket for your in-network deductible, and you would have a bucket for your out-of-network deductible. So, um, yeah, I had, in fact, I can use this example. I had a lady call today. She wants to, she wants to go to Denver. She wants a Sanford health plan, but she wants to be able to go to Denver to a specialist she sees. That's going to be out-of-network. She's going to have a $5,000 deductible out-of-network, and she's also going to have a, I think her plan was 1,750 in-network deductible. They do not, they do not co-mingle. They're, they're totally separate. So it's this bucket here, this bucket here. Does that answer your question? And the same would be true on your out-of-pocket maximum, okay?
What if, what if she were to be referred to that specialist in Denver by her network doctor?
Yeah, that, that's rare here.
Only if it isn't offered here.
Right.
Tell me something that isn't offered.
It's essentially what, what happens there, Dave, is they, Sioux, Sioux Falls, this, this used to come up a lot, all the time, especially with Mayo Clinic being, yes. And um, a lot of people from here like to go to Mayo. Sioux Falls, if Sanford, what our experience has been is Sanford and Avera, if they think they can do it here, they'll do it here, and they will not refer you. Now, that, there's exceptions. They do refer people, so I don't want to say they don't do it, but, um, if it's a referral, yeah, they would treat you like in-network. Emergency room, um, ER, that would be something that would be covered as in-network if you're traveling somewhere or something happens. But if you do something elective, that is going to be an out-of-pocket. Or even if you wanted to see a Sanford... Or even if you wanted to see a Sanford provided in your Avera plan, that's out of network.
That's a toughie. I just had a case with one of my employees that had a cancer situation. Could they do it here? Yes. How many had they done? One. And when he said, I just don't feel comfortable doing this operation. If you got the cancer and Mayo's done 10,000 of them and your guy's done one of them, it becomes an issue. I mean, as a patient, I would think you would.
So that doesn't count?
Pardon?
If the referral doesn't count then?
I had a Wellmark, uh, so my employee was able to go to Mayo.
Just want to revisit the HSA comment, um, just briefly, because although, yes, it would be paying the actual charge that is incurred, it's coming out of a, a plan, it's a glorified savings account is what it is. And that, that's what we're talking about funding. So it's just to like eliminate some of the fear that, that is maybe arising, um, they would, I'm proposing that we could fund, you know, a couple thousand dollars or whatever of that glorified savings account. And just to be super clear, if you don't go to the doctor, that becomes your money. So that's, that's why I like it so much.
Kind of becomes your money. It's, it's your money, but yeah, it's your money for, for medical purposes. Yes, yes, yes.
Your money for retirement or whatever.
Yes, yes. But you are, if you, you take that out, they take that money out early, you're going to be penalized on it. You're going to be actually penalized on a 20% versus 10% normal early withdrawal. So you'd be, you'd be 20 if you took it out, anything other than medical, um, but.
But you're just saying that's one option, that's not the whole plan.
Right, I just didn't want them to think that we're taking away everything and now you're paying your full cost for the doctor. Because if that were the case, if it comes out of a, or a savings account, which the city would have some money in their core.
Casey, do you know how these hospital plans are on chiropractor care?
Yeah, yeah, they, they'll treat, it's an office visit. Um, it'd be underneath their, uh, their, their office visit co-pay on chiropractic.
And chiropractors covered by HSA, it's a qualified expense as well.
Any idea with an HSA if people are more hesitant to go to the doctor because they want to, they want to keep that 250 bucks in the thing? Is there, I mean, I don't know.
Uh, well, I, I won't say specifically on the HSA. I would say on higher deductibles, that there's definitely, you see a correlation between a higher deductible and hesitation to go to the doctor. No doubt about it. Uh, there's been, I've read, I've, I've read many articles on that for sure, so. But I can't say specifically on an HSA if that would be the case or not.
I need to, I have to clarify with my chiropractor, but I want to, I believe like my chiropractor won't work with one of the hospital plans and I can't remember which one. And I have heard that Avera's not great with some chiropractor care. So I can verify with her, but I haven't heard great things about the chiropractor side of it with the hospital plans.
With the coverage, Christine, or processing the claim?
Coverage in all.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would encourage and I encourage anybody when, whether it's a Wellmark plan, whoever, it's always the best practice to ask that provider, do you participate with whatever provider you're with to avoid any of that? Um, now, I haven't, I haven't, I guess personally had any clients have an issue with that, Christine. That's not to say that there's not or there's, you know, but maybe, maybe he or she is not participating with one of the two, which I, you know, I don't know. It could be, if you get, I can get your, get his name or her name after the meeting and I can do some checking on.
Yeah, and I'm sure she's, she's tried to work with them, it just doesn't go along with it.
Okay.
Any idea how many, how many employees use Sanford compared to Avera?
We're about 50/50. Last time we looked at this, three years ago, it was pretty close to 50/50.
There's probably something going on at all. So those who have a network.
Tammy, you're awful quiet over there.
I'm thinking. I'm processing.
Thank you for that.
There's a lot to process.
There is.
I have, I've never been a big fan of choosing one system or the other. We never did it, we've never done it. Anything I've run has always been, you can have an option. I hate taking people's options away. $200,000 is a big number, even 120 if we go to Avera is a big number. Um, boy, I don't know. I'm still processing.
So as we all process, what's the deadline?
Um, I, you know, I think you want to have this done by the 15th of, of June. Yeah, yep. We could, you know, we could maybe buy some time, but Wellmark, if you, I mean, if, if that's the way you go, if you decided to renew with Wellmark, whatever way that would be, they would require it, everything's done by the 15th. And the carriers like to have that stuff done by the 15th, just so they can assure that, that cards are out, you know, policies are delivered, so those people have that by the end of the month, so it's not getting drawn into, you know, the following month and they don't have, people have to go to the doctor and they don't have cards. So that's why they, they, they pick those dates. But I would, that, that would be my recommendation to use, have this wrapped up by the 15th.
We're like, one, that's already, or between now and the 15th or 13th.
The downside to that, in my opinion, would be if we consider making a switch to one or the other, that doesn't give you much time to hold employee meetings and meet with everybody and educate people and talk through everything, which I don't like that we're up against the deadline.
Yes.
I propose we have it on the June 3rd agenda and make the decisions I want to react to, otherwise our next council meeting is the 17th.
You can have a special meeting just like you do tonight.
I don't see a way around not having another special meeting.
Maybe we have like a graduated plan, so, you know, I don't really want to keep the hand down the road because we've kicked it a lot many years now, but, you know, this is going to happen next year, so we need to prepare ourselves. And then this may happen the next year. I mean, it's a part of planning so that people know it's coming, um, rather than revisiting it every year. I've been tired of that. And I, I cannot stomach, sorry folks, but I can't justify 125,000. I, I just, I just can't in my mind. So either we need to have some contribution coming in or we need to change plans or some other creative thing. I, I'm open, but that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I, just, just so you're aware, I, I did ask both these carriers for a two year rate guarantee. Um, there was some discussion on it, there was some thought on it and I thought it was going to go our way, I thought we could get that, and they both declined to do a two year rate guarantee. And I think a lot of it's due to the fact that they're so much low, you know, lower than where, than where we're at currently. So, but I, that was, because I'm like, you know, I understand the same thing, this is going to be addressed next year. Well, if we get it, if we get a couple year rate guarantee, it would be great, you know, but it didn't, it didn't work out that way.
So maybe we say, okay, this is, this is our plan for next year, start positioning your family to make it work. I, I, I don't know, but, I mean, I don't want them to be up against the deadline either.
So the question, the question I would have is, if we make a switch as their way to use, then for a year or two, use that savings to help the employees get adjusted?
Well, what are they out? They're not paying anything extra unless they go out of network. I mean, would they be, are we, we're not asking to pay anything extra, I don't think.
I don't know.
I don't think we can do everything. I think we just take it one step at a time, personally.
So what you would propose, Barb, is if we make the change, you still continue doing that employee buyback? Is that right?
Yeah, and not make the change till next year, but it's coming. I think that's.
You're, you're saying stay with Wellmark this year?
Yeah. Not that I really like it, but, but as a transition to try to make it a little bit provalatable.
Well, I got a tough, I got a toughie with that with this much saving.
With Wellmark? You're talking about paying 100, 45,000?
I'm just, I'm just trying to make it a little bit easier.
Casey, I remember somebody saying or talking about that you reviewed an alternate plan several years ago, uh, with one of the hospitals, Avera, and there was 125,000 dollar savings.
143 at that time. That was an Avera plan.
When was that?
That was two years ago.
But we didn't change because we didn't want to lose the grandfather status. We were afraid of what was going to happen with the plan.
And I think there, there was the issue of allowing the employees the choice of Avera or Sanford or out of network. Any idea how many out of network claims there have been within the city?
I, I don't have that. I don't know that we, we may be able to get, or we possibly could get a report maybe from Wellmark on that, Dave. I'm not sure.
Show of hands?
With the current plan?
Well, I'm just wondering if we've got some people.
Well, here's, here's, here's the other part, they're, they're probably not out of network, you know? If, you know, with, with, with Wellmark, they're probably not out of network. Um, because if you, if you participate with a, if you're a doctor of system that participates with a Blue Cross Blue Shield provider of North Dakota, California, Arizona, whatever it is, you're in network.
Well, I'm, yeah, I, I'm talking about if we went to Avera, how many would have been affected by that?
Oh.
I think he's saying 50/50.
Yeah, you think it's pretty split?
No, no, I, I'm talking about have, do we have employees that have gone to, if, if they were under the Sanford plan or the Avera plan, uh, where they've gone to Mayo or Denver or, or things like that? We have had some?
I have had some.
Okay. Okay.
Can you educate us on the spousal requirement with the players now?
Uh, as far as they want, you want them to be part of it or not be part of it, or what do you?
I, I am familiar with one where, um, there's actually like a requirement that a spouse has access to a pay plan through their employer. Is that against a company thing?
Yeah, I think it might be a company thing. Nothing, these guys won't, have never, haven't stated anything that says, hey, if your spouse is over here, we won't cover you, you know, this way. Usually what they do is coordinate benefits on that or, or subrogate, um, on that if they both have coverage somewhere else, so.
That is one thing with our plan being set up the way that it is with no cost and the buyback. And we have people on our plan that have access to fully paid premiums, usually just single individual employee premiums where they work, but, you know, just know that we have to take that because the cities, um, will put them on there with a deductible buyback.
I think we've got people within the city that have those situations that, that keep their spouse on their other employee plan. And I know that we do. You know, so it's not a, it's not 100% that, uh, people just because, uh, this is paid that they put all of their family members on the plan. Am I correct in that? You know, so I don't know how much of that, that we're having. They might not put their, their kids on there, they might keep their, their kids on our plan, uh, but.
We've got quite a few. I mean, and each, each one of those costs the city like 75, 100 dollars a year to cover that spouse, even though they have their own coverage where they work.
I'd have to see what those numbers are. I, I do know that we have some that have the, the employee and children, but not necessarily the spouse, so.
We have spouses too, Julie, and I looked at the census last fall and that was something that came up.
But you can't tell who has coverage to their current employer and not off that census. You're just looking at wrong numbers.
Not on the census, but.
You're making an assumption that they have recovered with their employer when you don't know that.
Okay, so how, how are we going to proceed here? Now we know, we didn't know for sure. We didn't know before what the numbers were. We had, we were a guess. Now we know.
So give me historical perspective, when you could have saved 140 some two years ago.
It was because that was when the Obama thing was going on and we weren't sure how the grandfathering was going to work and.
Well, I don't have that, I don't, I'm not going to speak to you on that, but it was, I think the Obama, the Obama care came in 2010 and that's when we, we had a, you know, that year we had a substantial increase, um, like 28%. And we kind of stayed in path because.
Really didn't know, we were, we didn't really know what, what the ACA was going to do or mean. And I think actually that 28 was really reflected from companies being scared and not knowing what was going on. And really, if you take that, if you take that number out of the equation, we really had a really good run on, on Wellmark. Um, I can't speak to the, you know, specifics of that, that year, Chuck.
But it kind of quieted down in those nine years.
Yes, yes, yes. They're getting a better handle on, on, on what's going on and, and, you know what, Barb might be right on, I mean, I think we've always tried to, in the past, you know, five years for sure, probably, I think we've tried to protect the grandfather for sure. We've thought a lot about that. Um, that may have come into play a couple of years ago, but I think a lot of it was kind of what Dave was saying earlier. I think it's the division is what, if, if my memory is right, I think that was kind of the deal, that it was more the division of people not being able to choose where they wanted to go.
So that's why in the past, we've kept the grandfather.
Yes.
Well.
That and our renewals have been really, other renewals have been pretty good. We haven't, you know, other than that, we, you know, that same year Sanford declined to quote that, our business, uh, that same year that Avera gave us. And then we were really kind of hesitant at that point, um, to take, you know, to have the Avera plan as well, even though it was significant savings. I think that scared a lot of people too.
I'm just curious to that history, because if there's anything to be learned from it, I want to know that before we make some decisions.
Well, we got pushed back, that was part of it. Part of it was we were uncertain and so we chose to go the conservative route and stay with the plan. But that was, you know, we've looked at this time to time again.
Over the last eight years, so from 2011 to 2018, the average over those eight years has been 2.84%.
Except now we're facing 17.
Well, I'll add that in there and it's, I don't know what the average will go up. Over nine years of 4.41.
Well, I don't think you can look at it from a basis of how much it goes up. I'm looking at it from a gross amount, um, you know, 2% on an extra 125,000, I mean, that's what I'm looking at. That's a lot of pot. It's going to be uncomfortable, no matter what we do, it's going to be a lot. That's why we make the big bucks.
Part of my, part of my mind, we also have to consider the employees and employee retention, and this is, this is something that I think has, has played a role in, in keeping a lot of good people staying here rather than shopping around. There's, uh, there's, there's a lot of people that have, have skills that are marketable, uh, within our area and this is a benefit that we, we give that makes us more competitive. You know, I can talk about police officers. Police officers can, can go over to Sioux Falls, can go to Minnion County and, and probably end up with a fairly substantial increase in pay, even factoring in what it is that they're, they're going to have to do out of pocket for, for premiums. Um, we don't lose a lot of police officers to other, other agencies and that's, that's a strong positive because of the amount of time that we, and money that we invest in those officers and, uh, in training, how long it takes to take a new person, get them through the academy, get them through the training, get them out on the street running by themselves. Uh, I'm sure that we could probably talk about public works and the skills sets that we have in public works. Uh, they could go over and work for the city of Sioux Falls and, and probably get, I don't know, more money. more money in a tight job market. You know, it's not a... It's not a time to put yourself in a position because I know that the other cities and the other companies are looking for good people to go to work for them and they're willing to pay for it.
But I don't disagree with any of that, Dave. I've heard that argument for years and perhaps it's true. We were underpaid. I think we're better paid now, but we're actually double dipping because we're paying an extra hundred and twenty-five thousand plus we are paying all of the premium. So, in my mind, let's have a double dip. It's like, wow. I don't want to lose anybody, but in the real world, in the private sector, this is just... And I know they take all kinds of abuse and all of that, but I have to look at that bottom line and say, we got to do something. I don't know what it is. We don't want them to have to pay more and we don't want to switch plans. I just don't think that's fair to the public either. I'm only looking for a little grace someplace. But I, you know, if I'm the only one, well, then I'll just get out of order. I've got to load it with the fireworks and let it check down, so I'm getting kind of used to it.
I'm looking at the same numbers. I mean, I, you know, I can...
Considered the... And you probably have. I just want to bring... Have you considered the five percent? You know, I know it's... You know, but you could change or do the contribution by five percent.
I don't want to do that.
Oh, okay.
Well, you can do that on... You can do that on any of the plans, right? It's just you're limited on the grandfathered one, but to me, the grandfathered one would be the last one. I would be in favor of it just because the price difference is like sixteen dollars per plan different and you're a hundred percent covered for preventative services on the non-grandfathered plan and that's definitely a few more than sixteen bucks. And that also allows you to do the long-term planning. If you decide that you want to be at ten percent of the family plan in three years, you know, that plan, you can do those types of things. The grandfathered one, you're done. That's all you can do and you're locked in and that's it.
I'm a little scared. I want to retain all the good employees that we have. I'm a little scared of getting to the mindset of we retain at all costs when it comes to health insurance.
And we're still talking a very similar benefits package. We're still potentially talking no cost for the employee. We're still potentially talking buyback on the deductible. We're just talking about inconvenience with the provider, which I think we've all been there at some point. I've had to switch provider plans before. I had major surgery a couple of years ago and showed up and my doctor was sick and had to have a pinch hitter. I mean, that stuff speaks, but for two hundred thousand dollars, some of these name differences.
And yet we let a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars go two years ago. Times two is three hundred thousand.
I thought that was a good thing.
Hmm?
I thought that was a good thing. That we did that. You got to cut the cord at some point, Paul. We didn't at that point. I think that was good, but we didn't have as much information.
We didn't? We didn't have that same information that we have today? I would submit that we... Or the people had the same information. I mean, you had to have same charts that you're looking at.
I don't remember. Maybe you do.
Pretty much. I remember. I was sitting out there listening to it.
Had been the same.
With an open mind. With an open mind.
Well, and we... So you're saying that we should continue to do this year after year after year because we let it go that year? Is that what you're saying? I don't think that's a valid argument.
I don't put words in my mouth, Barb.
Okay, I'm asking you.
I'm not saying that, but I'm seeing what's changed, that we're looking at this differently today than we did two years ago. I just... I'm having trouble grasping what's changed. We didn't want to... Two years ago, we didn't want to switch to a single company or a single hospital. Two years later, we want to now.
So one thing that may have changed is the people sitting up here. How did you vote a couple of years ago, Barb? Do you remember?
I have no clue did. I don't know. I had the lunch. I probably said to leave it because we were uncertain. And I'm not saying I'm going to vote for anything now, but I think we got to talk about it.
Yep. It's very...
And I don't necessarily... You know, we don't all have to agree either. We should cover one. So, just because somebody doesn't agree doesn't mean they're the bad guy. Okay, what's our plan? I floated the idea of we're going to change, but not this year so people can prepare for it. I got kind of shut down on that, so let's hear somebody else's plan.
So if we make a change, I guess I need to leave here shortly, but if we make a change, I would need another work session to work through the numbers of what all we're going to pay for the employees so if they don't.
Um, I would totally agree with that. I need to see what...
To make it similar to what's being done now with a single provider, that's what I would like to look at the numbers though.
In... I don't... I'm not following.
If you make a switch to Sanford or Avera and you still do the play... Still pay all the same things that we pay now, I want to see those numbers.
Isn't that what we've got?
Point it out to me.
Second page.
I'm looking at the grandfathered plan versus two thousand.
You can just add on to any one of these the deductible buyback costs that the city has.
Which is?
Well, the last... Last night I had asked about seventeen people take advantage of it. Is that still an accurate number or has that changed?
That... Yeah. You might...
You're right on the... Yeah, it will... It can vary. It just depends on who basically deductible buyback comes into play on employees that actually hit their deductible. So that... It can vary. I think we're right. I think we've been pretty consistent on it, but...
What number was?
Twenty-five thousand.
Seventeen times fifteen.
We averaged about seventeen employees of fifteen hundred bucks per employee... Per covered person, that's not all employees, but about seventeen people hit their deductible in there, in and out on the average. So that's about twenty-five thousand.
Would you save on... I'd still like... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd still like to talk to some of the employees. Is that kosher? Yeah.
Do you recall what you saved in premium when you implemented a deductible buyback? When you increased it? Yeah, yeah. Actually, I wish I... Yeah, I have that. I still have that information in the file. But it was... It was about thirty... Thirty-six thousand, somewhere in there, thirty-eight, I think, when we first initiated that.
Over a year.
So...
Why couldn't we do another session? I need another session. I'm sorry.
You can do it next week. You can do it after the briefing.
Well, we're not going to make that. I guess I would suggest, since my idea didn't get a lot of traction, that somebody else comes with a different idea then. You can't just sit here and spin our wheels.
That's the point of having another work session.
Okay, but are you going to come with an idea ahead of time or create it at the work session?
Uh, maybe go with that.
I'm chewing on right now, Barb. I can't ignore that saving, you know, even when you add back in the employee buyback to me is enough of a difference. I can't stand pat with the Wellmark.
And you have to add the deductible buyback on the Wellmark premium too. So that's like seven hundred thousand.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was trying to count them.
So I just assume not wait till next Thursday? You don't? No. Three merry days of getting to the fifteenth. Wednesday?
We could do Monday too.
Uh, Monday's...
For an idea on Monday.
But that's it.
Tuesday at what?
Works for me.
I'm out of town all week.
But you don't need to ask.
Can you escape?
Hmm?
Can you escape?
You want to do next Tuesday at five?
We just want to mull around some ideas in our... Can we go again yet this week, Friday night? I'm out of town all next week is the problem.
I'm fine with Friday.
Ready?
If you can... To me, this is important enough. I can juggle anything around if we need to.
If that's enough time to mull around ideas and talk to employees.
Yeah.
What date is that?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Memorial weekend. Our party bar's going to be gone. Just give your calendar anything.
Memorial weekend doesn't really start on Friday, does it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I make the best. No, I'm...
Five o'clock again?
You do Friday, Barb?
Friday?
Yeah.
I can do Tuesday.
Tuesday of next week?
Yeah.
Tuesday at five?
So the only person missing next Tuesday would be Paul?
Yeah.
Oh, well, you can just go ahead. I kind of know where I am. Nobody wants me on Memorial Day, Chief? Who's got... Who can't make Tuesday? You can.
Yeah, I'll be gone all next week.
Oh, you're not all next week?
Yeah.
I can do Tuesday. I can do Tuesday.
Okay.
What do we think we're going to do on Tuesday? I mean, what would the...
We'll come up with a decision.
I mean, for those of us...
That we would take to the council on...
Yes. That's my thought anyway, because I mean, I've seen all these numbers. They're all new to me. The benefit... You've had Barb's looking at this year. This is all new. I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight and I don't want to wait until the third. That's Tuesday through the fifteenth.
Yes. I would agree with that. I think by Tuesday I can come up with... I can make a decision.
Now, just to refresh our memories, when we started this whole thing, we talked about... We were really talking about, you know, if you were going to ask the employees to contribute. So, we backed off of that.
Well, if we do, there's your compromise.
Oh, and pay the plan as it is?
No.
No. Yes, we don't ask the employees to do anything.
Right.
So I think I moved from a personal standpoint. I moved a lot. I've moved a lot because I still think that that's important, but I can live with that.
Tuesday at five. Sorry, I got to go.
Is there any information you want provided for the Tuesday?
I... Yeah, I don't know if there's a chance to meet with just employees or hear from them, but I would welcome that.
Yeah.
I don't know how to go about that.
Do you want to... Public Works usually has breaks at what? Ten, ten-thirty? And then two, two-thirty? That's the best time to hit them. The police department, they're all working weird shifts, so it's not quite as easy to go.
Scooters.
Scooters. No, expressway.
Do a ride along.
I like scooters coffee better.
Is there a...
My turn.
Is there a number of out-of-pocket buyers that... If Wellmark had a plan that was comparable in savings, but had, you know, the out-of-pockets or hires or... Is there anything you can structure? You know, as far as taking those savings and implementing a high code. Again, buy down on those out-of-pockets. I guess that's just a thought that maybe if we... You know, maybe you can find a Walmart plan or something. So you can... You know, we have... We'll put that on there. We get some saving.
You're talking about that Walmart four thousand?
It's not that one. No, I didn't include it. I'm just... I'm looking through here. They've got just a, you know, there's all kinds of them, so I was just looking through here and I looked at one and I'm like, you know, you've got a... It's a two thousand... Twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, single, seventy-five hundred, family, and then it's a five out-of-pocket single, but twelve on them. So you're increasing the single out-of-pocket by a thousand and the family by four thousand, but yet that premium's late.